Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bowzen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Right, just, Mr. Foyce let me know that he wouldn't be in attendance today, so his excuse this evening. So, right now, we have a moment of silence, if you would please join. All right, thank you, the pledge. Mr. Childs, did you want to lead today, or would you like Mrs. Felkley to take over for you?
Mrs. Felkley can take over for me today.
All right.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of resolutions 10 and 11, and also adding an address to consent item number 15 of 541 Albany Street.
Second.
The motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda, it's now time-
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 3rd?
Oh, you didn't do that to get-
No, I don't, sorry about that.
Yes, sir, sorry about that.
November 3rd meeting, 2025 meeting, regular council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have minutes. First up is oral presentations, your opportunity to address the council on non-agenda-related items, so please step up to the podium, let us know your thoughts.
I want you to know, none of this is rehearsed. I'm Mary Potter, trustee of the Grouse Museum. We're having a new display, a new exhibit, and it's called "I See London, I See France." The Grouse has lots of underpants. So my question is, what you got under there? Underwear. You just made me say underwear. That's exactly what, that was funny, right?
Absolutely.
That's exactly what the crowd is going to have on display from November 25th to 20, of 2025, up until May of that year. And it's going to be a very interesting display, because it's going to show crinolins and all the different things that took place that women and men wore during these years. So, it's something I think you really would enjoy, and I think you should not miss it. So it starts on November 25th. Then, on December 6th, we are having a Christmas at Russell Square. And this is going to be something, we had it last year, it's going to be, again, free to the public. And sometimes I begin to wonder why it is that maybe there aren't more council people that come to this. We had our Halloween spooktacular, I don't know if anybody was there, were you there, Rob? I don't think so. Well, you missed a great time. Anyway, so this will be held at the Russell House, Snowden House, in that district. And we're going to have the UNI, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The Metropolitan Corral is having a small group there. We are going to have the union, kids from La Porte City are going to be there. There's going to be food, there's going to be all kinds of things happening on the second floor for crafts for children. Santa will be there, all these things. And we are doing it, again, as a donation-only project. And the reason for that is, we feel that the more people we can get into the Grouse Museum, the more people will understand that it is there. And as you know, the Russell House, Rensler Russell House, and the Snowden are both properties of the Grouse. And so, there are two groups that work on this, but the Friends of the Grouse, this is a project they are putting together. The Friends of the Grouse always take care of everything that is needed at the Grouse Museum with these two houses. And right now, we're trying to get a wall in the basement shored up, different things like that that are needed. So, I would hope, since it's free, that some of you guys would come to it to share what we need to have shared. And I would also like to ask you, if you could, we have these really neat posters. And if I would give you each one, do you at least have a doorway that you could put it on? Or do you have a place that somebody could see it? If you do nothing else, we need the publicity of showing this to people. So if you will do that, I will bring you some more of these on the next time I come to this place. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I want to first speak on the new sports center that we're going to have, and I want to try to make sure that we don't exclude some raw talent that would be very easily looked over, because they didn't have parents like me and you had, and a lot of others, that made sure their children got to where they needed to be. Some of the children that I grew up with, parents didn't care if they ever seen a wrestling mat. So what was very, very important for them was the Boys Club wrestling team, in which my father and Bill Tate, Junior Philip Carwell, a host of others took a part in. Out of that short period of time, I want to say there was at least four or five state champions, a couple of them two-timers, national champions from Iowa State, and a world champion, I want to say, in Sweden and Mexico City, came out of the Boys Club. So, something that would help the children over there, and it puts a wave in crime instead of preschool to prison, it could be from a wrestling mat to an engineering degree like Stuart Carter. And Stuart would not be the, hadn't, would not have been the wrestler without it being for the Boys Club. I don't care what he make his mouth says, and he needs to speak up on it a little bit more. But very important is getting that wrestling team going back at the Boys Club, so they were represented when they have an AAU or Nationals. And my father, we traveled, he made it more than wrestling. He gave kids a exploration, I mean, they, they were exploring. They, a lot of the kids wouldn't have never seen the inside of the Williams Center in Tulsa, Oklahoma, or went to the Tulsa Nationals. We have family down there, so that was a part of our thing, and I took away too much time on that. What I do want to say is, we need to work on this corruption here. Been 23 years ago, I met with Ms. Rebecca Colton, who was assistant to Chief Justice McGivern at the time. I was explaining to her what had happened at that time. And at the end of our conversation, I know that she's not a person that could take any order, nor could the judge, I just needed to inform him after the assault on my daughter. What she said, well, that's not a reflection, it wasn't a reflection of Iowa law, and I agreed with her. But what it is and continues to be is an ongoing reflection of the corruption in Iowa. And it's not limited to what I have said about the Waterloo Police or the Des Moines Police, because I've also contacted our governors. All three of the last ones, the first one was Branstad in 99, then it was Dusky Terry, who was assistant to Vilsack, and from there, all of the rest of the assistants. We need to get on this corruption that I'm talking about, and it needs to be addressed. Have a good evening.
David Driver, 3145 West Forest Street. Just came by Six Corners, and the thought came to mind whether anything's being done, do we have somebody that's going to start utilizing that Quickstar building? And are we still talking about a roundabout at Six Corners?
Know anything about the old Quickstar?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We're not aware of any active plans to redevelop the Quickstar, and the roundabout was shown as part of the grant for the 4th, 5th, and 6th Street construction. We did not get that grant, the new grant that we applied for is just for the downtown area, so there is no plans for a roundabout at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Horace Dilawu, 1725 Huntington Road. After these meetings, I frequently get calls through the next week or so. And one of the biggest topics I've heard is the single speed, the $750,000 taxpayer money being given to reorganize, add extra people, whatever it is they're doing. Not many people understand that. They could not figure out why, they didn't have to give a financial statement from any of those three. We just gave $750,000. I know there were a couple of council people that had a lot of questions back and forth about their ability to be successful. I can tell you the word on the street is, single speed's not doing well, and they needed help. Well, they got it. And they asked me why you would make this decision, and I said, well, one of the folks sitting at the head table stated that they liked taverns, and that they frequented those taverns. I don't think that's a reason to spend the taxpayers' money to the tune of $750,000 without any financial responsibility. And I told them that. I told them they need to watch and see who says what, what the deals are, and try and learn as much as they can. I don't like paying $750,000 for something I will never use. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dilawu. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, David Deeds, 922 Mulberry Street, here as my, in my role as Chair of the Waterloo Regional Airport Board. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit, and the audience tonight, a little bit about, if you haven't flown from ALO, or had someone come into ALO from outside the community, in a while, you should give us a try. We've finally recovered to our pre-pandemic levels of passengers. And you might say, well, why is that? Well, because we're close, we're quick, and we're connected, starting with close. We are, as we stand here right now, we're 11 minutes from your first flight. If you are at 4th and San Martin, you're 10 minutes from your first flight. If you're at Logan and Parker, you're 10 minutes from your first flight. Compare that to well over, or over an hour, or well over two hours for your other nearby, quote-unquote, nearby alternatives. We've got great new aircraft at ALO, 7, or 65 to 75-seat aircraft that have multiple classes in them. They have a much better experience for our passengers, the Wi-Fi onboard, which, why you should care about that is that you can get the free entertainment on your flight. That's why you probably want the Wi-Fi on the flight. But it's an opportunity for you to try a better way of traveling. Make your first connection from ALO, not after driving an hour or two hours, is another thing we would say. You might say, well, what about fares? I just pulled a little comparison of fares here before I came to the meeting tonight. We are currently, for the week of Christmas, whether you're traveling or coming, someone is coming back to you, the week of Christmas, we're $37 under our competitor, if you will, for Orlando, we're $65 under for Miami, we're $29 for Austin, we're $55 under for Denver, we're $20 over for Vegas. But the question is, is how much is your time worth? Whether you are traveling yourself, and you want to have someone drop you off, you can save the parking as well, happy to have you park at the airport, too. Even our rates there are cheaper than what you would experience at other airports. So, encourage you to get on with us here at ALO, and give us a try. We've got a great product, great location, and we're connected through over, one stop, to over 179 cities from Chicago O'Hare. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Meeks, 609 East Donald Street. Mr. Mayor and Council, and to the Police Department, I, the Police Department and the other emergency services that, that are rendered, no, you own a, one of the top names on our, on our prayer list, and we appreciate all the work that the policemen, policemen do. But I, my purpose tonight is, last council meeting, Ms. Carson, one of the local, local business persons, here, she said that racist ideas and things were being floated in, in connection with the, with the election things, and she was, she was disappointed. And, of course, I was disappointed, but my big disappointment was that no one in the council, no one at the, up there afterward said that they have not heard of it, but if they do, they would put it down. And, and that disappointed me, because our community, as diverse as it is, we have to, we have to be intentional about, about working, making sure that we work together. And of things that are said, even from, from, as a black person, if I hear things that said that are versus about other races, I, I, as, as a Christian and as a 79-year-old person living, well, I, I cannot let that go by without saying something. No, either, addressed, need to be addressed in some point, but anyway, that's, that's what I said. I was disappointed that no one, none of the, none of the council person, no one made any reference to what Ms. Carson had said about the, about the races, things that was, that was added to, that was being floated concerning the election.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Latonya Graves, 607 East Donald Street. And I agree 100% with what Deacon George Meeks just said. And so, I just want to reiterate, the state audit vindicates City of Waterloo and All-In Grocers investigation, a comprehensive re-audit conducted by the Iowa State Auditor's Office has confirmed that the City of Waterloo acted appropriately in its financial and procedural handling of the All-In Grocers development. The audit covering the period from July 1, 2017, through December 31, 2024, found no improper disbursements or instances of non-compliance. So, you keep seeing stuff all over Facebook, you know, that the city mishandled the All-In Grocers, but this, so I guess you're calling those people, I guess they're calling this auditor's report a lie. So, you still see all this negativity on Facebook. We're supposed to be bringing each other together, and this election has been so divided, it's crazy. I'm the president of the NAACP, and I haven't spoken out, but I'm speaking out now. I've spoken out as Latonya Graves, but now I'm speaking out as the president of the Black Hawk County NAACP, because we fight for the rights of all people. And so, unless you, like Deacon George just said, start denouncing all this racist rhetoric and discrimination, I'm so, I'm so, I'm so, I'm so upset. But if you're going to have people that you associate with, and you continue to allow them to post all this negativity and racism on your page, for me, it's opening my eyes to see exactly where you are, where you stand, and what you permit, like I said last week, you promote. And until you start denouncing the negativity, the hatred, the racism, the discrimination, it's going to continue. But again, the NAACP fights for the rights of all people. I received a letter stating, I didn't make a comment, no, would I make a comment if a white candidate's signage was defaced? Yes, I would have. No white candidate's signage was defaced, so there was no need for me to make a statement. So, you guys, you guys sitting up here have a job to do, and you can stop all this racist rhetoric, all this negativity, but you're not doing anything to do that.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to comment? Going a second time for public comments? Council?
Yes, sir. Does Council have anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Childs.
Uh, thank you. Just quickly, with the holidays approaching, of Thanksgiving and Christmas not far off thereafter, I just want to announce that I will not be personally hosting a ward meeting this month or next month, as I've done in the past. If Mr. Bowzen wants to continue with Ward 2, I think that's up to him, and he can say if he would like to afterwards. But I will not be present, as I have some family matters to attend to, and I won't be in the state for the next one either. So, thank you for those that have attended. It's been a good year of people coming to the meetings and hearing things about what constituents are interested in hearing about. And I'd like to also have a big shout-out to Noel's and his department. And I can finally say that we have accomplished our goal, and Upland is coming down. I've driven by it several times, and it's nice to see the rubble there as opposed to that building, and it's just slowly coming down, but it is coming down. So that was a lot of hard work from that neighborhood and from Noel's department to get that done in an accelerated manner, and we were able to do it. So, thank you for your work, and let's just keep moving forward.
So trouble is not rubble. Counsel, what do you think else? Mr. Bowzen.
And I had contacted Mr. Anderson about this. I'd like an update on the old Courier Building and the new Courier Building. The old Courier, Courier Building, they were supposed to start construction in August, and then at our one council meeting, you said they were going to start it on the roof in October. I don't see anything going on there, and they're past their development agreement. And then on this, on the City Hall remodel, it was, that, uh, development agreement was approved December 2nd of 2024, we're approaching a year. I'd like to know where we're at on that, if someone has an update. I did give them a pre-warning that I was going to talk about this.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. For the West Side Courier Building, they were just waiting to see if they got the historic tax credits. As you may recall, they took off the metal facade on the one side. It's actually two buildings, there's also the Montgomery Ward side. The, so the side closest to East 4th Street is still eligible for state and federal historic tax credits. They did not get a finalized Part II to their SHPO portion, so they were not eligible to get the tax credits from the state. So they are basically reevaluating their, their finances to see if they're going to move ahead with the project, and we hope to know that in probably the next couple of weeks from them. They also have the option of passing that project along to another developer, if they'd like to, for, because there are currently state workforce housing tax credits allocated to it, there is state brownfield, grayfield tax credits allocated to it. So they have a lot of state investment in the, in the project if they move ahead. In terms of the East Side Courier Building, we are in design phase. They're basically working on the, I'm going to say, go-to-bid documents for design at this point. We had a, a number of things to look at for the design that probably slowed us down a little bit more than we thought. I think originally, we were hoping to go out to bid, probably in the last month or two, but with some of the changes for some of the structural changes, they had to bring on a structural engineer, as you may recall. And there's a safe room that has to be added to it, so, um, they are in the design phase, and hopefully we'll be moving ahead with that and hearing back from them in the next couple of months as well.
Thank you. And one more comment, and I do want to address the racial rhetoric, and I, and I hope it's getting, it's behind us. But I will say that there are members in this audience, and on this dais, that shared posts, one posted Mr. Dilawu and I talking at an event, and the post said, "This is where racial rhetoric begins." And a City and City Council person also made a Facebook Live post and accused me of being a racist. And that couldn't be farther from the truth. So, you want to talk about unity, you want to talk about bringing everybody together, let's do that. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll go after you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor. Most definitely, um, one of the issues is that when comments are made and no one says anything about them, then they are complicit in that. And we know that racism is a system of advantage based on race, so that an individual that doesn't address the disadvantages that are being imposed upon people of color, then by virtue of not addressing it, carries that label additionally to endorse or to be in alignment with someone who has said some of the most vicious things and showed some of the most derogatory images of individuals, which is unimaginable that we, in 2025, would utilize images that are reminiscent of, of the 18th and 19th century. It's just unimaginable, but it has happened, even resulting to internalizing that grief and pain and making it difficult for folks to function as, as they need to function. So, if nothing is being said to undo it or challenge it, then by virtue of not saying anything, an individual may consider themselves to be racist.
Total bull.
Total bull.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Your research.
So, I mean, she, she listen to you, you listen to her.
I apologize.
Mrs. Wilder.
Uh, Mr. Meeks, I do appreciate you for holding us accountable, because there has been a lot of hate spewed online. And anytime I see it, I always challenge it, rightfully so, because I don't believe in hate. I just feel like there have been a lot of years where things have been said that have been swept under the rug, and it's brought out an entirely different side of Waterloo on both sides. And so if there is a conversation to be had, it is, don't throw stones at all. Just don't do it at all, because it's been done, and it's being done this whole time. And finally, we're speaking up about it, because we're tired of it. I mean, my name has been trashed for almost four years, and finally, the last two months of my time here is when I decided to stick up for myself, and it's, now it's an issue. But what about everything that was said in the first four years? It wasn't an issue then, but now it's an issue when we stick up for ourselves. And so I hear you, and if, if there is a way that we can find a solution, I'm okay with that. What I'm not okay with is continuing to spread hate and then being upset when we respond to it, because I can't keep allowing people to put hate on my name, when I'm not a hateful person. And if you aren't a hateful person, then show that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Simon.
I've known George for a long time, so I appreciate you getting up and stating what you had to say. I, I will disagree with Belida, if I may, and this is just a difference of opinion, it's nothing personal. If you're going to use the association comment that you made, I, I, I think that stretches it a little bit too far, because if you say something, if somebody, if somebody did something or did something racism, or, or pulled a gun and shot somebody, and that person knew you, and you didn't come out in public and denounce it, that doesn't mean you're a bad person. You know, in my opinion, because otherwise, I would be sitting here commenting on 4,000 things on Facebook every damn day. So, I don't think you can label somebody a racist just because they don't respond to a racist comment. That's my opinion, okay? I've been with you guys now for two years, I treat you all with the same respect, regardless of- you all with the same respect regardless of who you are or whatever. I don't, I don't do anything out of the ordinary that I can think of, and I would never would. I treat everybody with respect. It doesn't matter what your skin color is, it doesn't matter where you're from, where you grew up, how much money you make. That's just how I was raised. And I do not appreciate, you know, somebody calling somebody a name with no, I mean, I had people when I ran for my election that had never met me, judging me from something that they, they had never met me. I, I, I even reached out to some people that had commented. Because, okay, you can comment all you want, you, freedom of speech, I get it. But the labeling is what needs to stop in this town, I think. And, and that's just my opinion. And then, like I said, I respect everybody's opinions, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't think you can push that association button that widely. Is the only thing I'm asking. So, that's all I had to say about that, and I just want to say thank you for everybody that spoke up. So, thank you.
I did speak up for you though at that meeting, didn't I?
You did, sir.
Yeah, I don't even want to talk about it. I've, I've been called more monkeys and, and, uh, some of you folks allow some of the posts, but I don't, uh, my focus is on the city of Waterloo, so if that's all our public comments, can we, we move forward?
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second, absolutely second.
A motion to be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose, public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, with the addition of Bill's Payment, uh, 1A1 for November 10th in the amount of $2,974,000, uh, $974,705.49 and for November 17th, $4,294,126.48.
Motion's been made with the second.
And, and I had asked that we talk about 33 through 37 separately.
Okay. All right, so the other items, and we'll take 33 through 37 separately. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Can I read them all at one time, sir?
Yep.
All right. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve and receive and file, uh, Board of Adjustment Minutes for April, May, June, July, August, and September of 2025. Motion to receive, file complete streets, committee meetings for March, April, June, August, and September of '25. Motion file Highway 218, review and design commission meetings May and August of 2025. Motion to file Historic Preservation Committee meetings, April, May, June, July, August, and September of '25. And a motion to receive and file planning and zoning commission meetings, February, April, May, June, July, August, and September.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Mr. Bowson.
And I, I bring this up, and I've brought it up in the past, that these minutes need to be more timely. We should not be receiving six months' worth of minutes, especially planning and zoning, because a lot of items that are discussed in planning and zoning are brought before the council, and, and the discussion items are in the minutes. But I don't know what, what it's going to take, but I, I, I don't think it's right to do six, seven months' worth of minutes all at one time. I, I think a lot of this information that's in here is good information if, if counsel reads the minutes like I do for every one of these, uh, commission meetings or committee meetings. Um, what do we have to do to get these done in a more timely manner?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. Uh, we apologize for the multiple different boards and commissions there that had some backed-up minutes. Um, we will work to make sure we're getting those , uh, more timely, monthly, or at least, um, you know, no more than two months at a time would be for sure our goal. Uh, we were dealing with some, uh, training of the staff person that does those, so there was some, some missed months in there.
And I appreciate that, and I, especially the Board of Adjustments in planning and zoning, because those are all feed up to council, and it would be nice to have that ahead of time. Thank you.
Well, even planning even more so because we base, we base our, our votes based upon planning. Board of Adjustment is a little bit more finite and finished, but definitely make sure we get those in time, because if it's based upon what they're voting on and they don't have that information, then that's less info. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it possible to add those minutes to the agenda under an item that it may pertain to from one of those departments? Is that too much to ask, or is that something that needs to be pre-approved before it would be put on?
So if there's an item, uh, normally it's a motion to approve or the hearing along with the recommendation from the planning, like zoning commission. So that piece is on there, that it was approved, and normally the information is there. But, you know, getting the minutes out, that's an easy request, and that's one that should be done.
Thank you.
So it's already, already in, in there for the approval with the recommendation. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, just really quickly, um, is Tristan Aldis here? Tristan? Well, if you're watching, Tristan, uh, position of Clerk Two in Waste Management Services, so welcome aboard. Uh, we have some renewals for boards and commissions. Jessica, uh, Rucker to the Design Review Board, and, uh, Colleen, Colleen Weller to the Historic Preservation Commission. And, um, also, this, this evening, we have Barb Prather here, um, who is the Director of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Um, one of the things we've seen over the last several months, uh, several months, couple months, uh, was the, uh, government shutdown, which affected in Blackhawk County, uh, close to 8,600 people here, uh, with the SNAP, SNAP benefits. And so, um, Barb has tasked the cities, which all of you have stepped up to do, so thank you, counsel, has stepped up to ask if Waterloo Cedar Falls could, uh, both support at 25,000 and at the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to support at 50,000 and make that a challenge to, um, our business community, uh, to try to match that. Uh, even though SNAP benefits are, are going to be reinstated, uh, the fact of the matter is that so many families are behind right now from this delay. Uh, so we just want to thank the council for your support. Uh, the community hears you. And, Barb, thank you for all of your, your efforts as well. Did you want to say something really quickly? I don't know, they may reverse, uh, resend that, no, just laughing.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, um, and thank you to Mayor Hart for his leadership on this of challenging the community. Um, to say the least, the last month is, six weeks have not been, um, our funnest times at the food bank. Um, usage by food pantries and the Cedar Valley Food Bank is, bank is up, or Cedar Valley Food Pantry Program is up 50% um, from the number, uh, we've served in October. Like, if you look at the, uh, first two weeks of November versus the first two weeks of October, it's up 50%. Um, that's a lot of people. Um, and yes, thankfully SNAP benefits were reinstated, um, over the weekend, and the good part too is with the continuing resolution, they actually have passed a farm bill. Um, so even if the government does shut down at the end of January, SNAP benefits and other benefits won't go away. So we're grateful for that. But this community has been tremendous in offering support, both financially, volunteer time, and food drives. Um, they were sharing with the results of the big food drive this weekend, um, led by Vicky, um, and all of the people that helped with that, and that was amazing. But unfortunately, even with, um, the, even with SNAP benefits coming back in place, um, we're now, um, we'll be experiencing the implementation of the big beautiful bill, which has more restrictions. Um, but the food bank is here to fill the gap where the needs are, but we can't do it without community support, and I appreciate the efforts that are being put forth to do that. So on behalf of the food bank, um, thank you. And I just want to do a special shout out to my staff. They have done yeoman's work this last, they always work hard, but this last month has been really difficult, and so I want to personally publicly thank them as well.
And maybe, maybe one of the volunteer opportunities, if council wants to go out together, uh, maybe take a shift or two, folks are interested, maybe, maybe that'll be a great way, uh, to also not just the dollar amount, but those that have not volunteered would be volunteered collectively to do it. Maybe that'll be a good idea too, so.
That'd be great. Just, and just a reminder, our big holiday distribution starts next Monday. Um, we're planning on about 5,000 families to come through our, well, through our parking lot. Um, everybody, Lafayette is going to be a logjam, but we appreciate the work of the police department and everything they do to help us with that. Um, but we're just trying to help people. So if you want to help us with that, just reach out to me and I'll fit you in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, back to business. Could someone say one, two, and three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to approve the following resolutions. Uh, first, a resolution approving an American Rescue Plan Act's recipient agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $500,000. Number two, a resolution approving First Amendment to the 2023, 2022, 2025 Residential Miscellaneous Area Snoma Removal Contract for City-Owned Lots Generally Acquired Through Iowa Code 657A, changing the term of the contract from April 19th, 2025 to April 18th, 2026. Then number three, a resolution approving a permanent easement agreement in the amount of $7,351 with TNS Properties Man- Management, too, LLC, located at 1409 La Porte Road in conjunction with the La Porte Road Phase Two Reconstruction Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute, execute said document.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made with the second. Any comments about these three items?
Uh, just want to say, Mr. Mayor, really happy.
The audience first.
Oh, sorry.
All right, Mr. Nichols, you were ready to go.
Yeah, just really happy about, uh, that, uh, first Habitat for Humanity, uh, amount project. I know when I first came on council, we were talking, uh, about, uh, opportunities, uh, that we could, uh, use with this type of money and, uh, really help, uh, build up housing in our community. So just happy to see this being on council agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Yeah, I, I, I want to echo what Mr. Nichols said. I'm, I'm, I was concerned when it was put on weeks ago and, and it, it didn't come back on because they have a very narrow window. They have to have this done by December of 2026, but by July, or June or July of, of, of '26, they, they got to let us know if they're going to be able to spend their money or not. A question for Mr. Anderson, would, would some of this $500,000 go towards what, what we've been paying for on acquisition and demolition on some of these projects since they've got to get this money spent in a timely manner?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Yeah, we've been talking with Habitat, uh, officials about, uh, obviously meeting the timelines and the projects that they're working on and, and how to, to get the work, to get the money, uh, spent in a timely way.
So they, they, this is something they could spend it on. It's, it's like when we bought the, the, the house a couple of weeks ago, and then we also paid for the demo, and, but it looked like we were going to have about $60,000 into it.
They would definitely be eligible expenses, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone do, uh, four, five, and six, and seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, I'd like to approve the following resolutions, uh, resolution approving and accepting an acquisition contract and approving a deed to sell real property to the city of Waterloo for a partial right-of-way acquisition and permanent and temporary easement agreement, easements agreement with CNM Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $5,132 located at 1620 La Porte Road in conjunction with the La Porte Road Phase Two Reconstruction Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk's execute said documents. Uh, number five, resolution approving a temporary easement agreement in the amount of $2,000 with Hollerin Properties LLC located at 1950 Plymouth Avenue in conjunction with the La Porte Road Phase Two Reconstruction Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Let's, let's stop at that one at four and five.
Okay.
Sorry about that. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak to four and five? Counsel? Madam Clerk, four and five?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take six and seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution extending the moratorium for the issuance of new tobacco permits in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa until May 5th of 2026. And number seven is a resolution extending the moratorium for the issuance of special permit for variants of hobby farms in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County until May 5th of 2026.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Uh, anyone with questions? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take eight and nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Miss Mayor. Miss Ma'am.
I'd like to ask if we adopt a resolution approving a school resource officer agreement with the Cedar Valley Catholic Schools Waterloo area only to provide one school resource officer in the schools for fiscal year '26 through '29 in the amount of $357,320, including funding for officer training and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And secondly, resolution approving request by the Waterloo Regional Airport to release 89.16 acres of airport property known as Parcel F for the amount of $2,675,000 to the city of Waterloo, Iowa for continued development and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute all formal land release documents as required and submit said documents to the Federal Aviation Administration.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Yes, sir.
David Dyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. On number nine, um, my understanding from years ago was that there was a certain amount of area around an airport that had to be kept vacant, I guess, in case of a, a plane crash or whatever. Uh, is this outside of that area that we're going to sell for number nine, or we're going to buy, I should say, for number nine, or are we, um, hedging on a bet?
All right, thank you. Good question, sir. Stephen?
Stephen Kierger, Director of Aviation. This area is where the old closed runway from about 10 years ago was. It's that safety area, which we are not returning that runway to operation.
Okay, but width, width and length and all that, we're, we're in compliance.
Yep.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, sir. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I wanted to mention something there.
Please. You got on a green shirt, I figured.
I wanted to, uh, Columbus being my alma mater, I wanted to congratulate you guys on taking the safety of the students into consideration and all the work that you guys did with the police chief, and I just wanted to thank you from council. So, thank you.
Yeah, you got the green, green yeti, Hugh.
I did, I actually came when the kids were doing, I think, uh, mock interviews or sharing their binders. At one point, I came to Columbus, so they do some pretty good work over there.
My wife is a grad too, so.
Boom.
All right, so thank you. Uh, 12 and 13?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt Bowson resolutions. First is resolution approving a professional services agreement with Strand Associates to provide proposal preparation, bidding-related services, and if authorized, services for, uh, the anaerobic lagoon biogas upgrading project at the Waste Management Anaerobic Lagoon in an amount, in an amount not to exceed $50,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And then finally, a resolution approving an addendum number 10 in the amount of $1,502.50 with Ian Communications in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023, construction of a fiber-to-the-premises feeder distribution and backbone network project, contract number 1088, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on this, two items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Somebody take number one?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second time in ordinance for binding that the general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the newly described, amended, and, and restated South Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa. Buy and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District and other tax, taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest in loans, monies, and advance to indebtedness, including bonds issued to be, or, or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with like three seconds. Um, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowson?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
No.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? Is that four?
Four, four to three. No, it's three to three. Didn't pass.
Three to four.
Well, we're missing, right, that's a no vote, right?
Yep. All right, number two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, consider pass for the second time, an ordinance providing the general property tax levied and collected each year on all property taxes located within the described Baltimore Fields Urban Renewal area in the city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, state of Iowa. Buy and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Waterloo, county of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School Districts and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment and principal and interest in loans, monies, and advancement to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions, your comments? Yes, sir.
Kevin Fittro, Panther Builders, Cedar Falls, Iowa. I guess, given the number one, which did not pass, and our vote the last time, just a couple of comments I'd like to make. One is, I think there was thought that we delayed our decision to move forward on this development on a TIF, which wasn't it, we were finishing Edison School Project in an infill area where, where we feel like we did a wonderful project for the community. While that happened, Cedar Falls, Hudson, other areas around you have created now and are doing TIFs where we are starting to see plats coming through in development for those areas. This is a wonderful thing for the community. I, I, it's disappointing to see number one fail, but I guess our request would be to table this vote until you have a full council.
Last time, last time it was.
Four, three.
I believe it was the suspension of the rules that didn't pass.
Yes, sir.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I would note that we have previously approved a development agreement on this site stating that we would adopt an urban renewal plan. And with them starting some construction out there, if we were to fail to adopt the urban renewal plan, I would imagine we would be subject to some legal actions by them, because we would be in breach of our agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Is, was, is that on both, one and two, or just two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item until the next council meeting.
Second. Discussion on the tabling, sir.
I don't, I don't think we should table it. I, I, if I remember that development agreement, it, it didn't say it was contingent that, that the TIF was going to be, had to be passed in order for the development agreement to move forward. So I'm not in support of tabling it.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, the tableing to next week.
Okay. Mr. Bowzen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
No.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
That passes.
Didn't pass.
No, it didn't.
Oh shit, that's right, sorry.
All right, so vote for this project, Madam Clerk, for the motion that didn't pass.
Movements are calculated based on the number of members present. Ordances and resolutions are calculated based on the total number of council.
So it did pass?
It did pass. Well, it.
Three to three.
It tied.
It ties a no vote.
So just to clarify that. So it's tied.
So the first one, two, then?
Ties a no. Just clarifying the calculation on the vote, sir.
All right. All right, so motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Second?
Motion been made with second, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you.
Yeah. We didn't pass the table, and we did not do anything with this.